Mr. Hagan, you are, you're good to go.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Board of County Commissioners, January 22nd, 2025. A comprehensive plan amendment workshop before I pass things over to staff to introduce the first item. Can we have a roll call to establish a quorum?
Guys, I just got kicked out. I just got locked out. Did something happen on that?
Is staff able to provide a roll call?
Do we have the clerk on the line?
It appears that Ms. Jennifer Ramos is online from the clerk's office.
Hey. Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I think I was muted somehow on your end or on HTV's end. Okay, Hagan?
Here.
Bowles?
Here.
Sepeda?
Yeah.
Cohen?
Here.
Miller? Myers?
Here.
Wostel?
Here.
You have a quorum, sir.
All right, thank you. Staff, introduce the first item.
Sir, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Melissa Leinhardt here with Planning Commission staff. Today is a special workshop dedicated to the publicly initiated urban service area expansion study. So we have two items on the agenda for presentation and discussion with no formal action taking place today. The purpose of this workshop is to provide information to you and also to hear comments from the commissioners. With that, I will go ahead and introduce Ms. Sophia Garantiva, who will be presenting both items, A1 and A2. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Again, Sophia Garantiva here, Planning Commission staff, and I'll be presenting the two items on the agenda. Before I dive in, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes.
So these two text and two map amendments that are associated with the urban service area expansion. These are the ones I'll be presenting on were directed by the board in March of 2024. The first phase included the expansion of the urban service area boundary in the Baum Y Mamma area, which is the subject of the text amendments with further direction to change the future land use of these areas to residential four, which is the subject of the map amendments. I'll present the two text amendments, HCCPA 2444 and 2446 first, and then the map amendments, HCCPA 2445 and 2447, and then leave time for questions. So starting with HCCPA 2444 and 46, the urban service area expansion. Again, these are publicly initiated text amendments. These text amendments are proposing an expansion of the urban service area by a total of approximately 12,253 acres, around 4,000 acres as part of CPA 2444 and 8,000 acres as part of CPA 2446. The following shows the entire boundary expansion area in the hatch pattern with the red dash line. The blue line shows the existing USA boundary. And the following just shows a zoomed in aerial for the expansion area associated with HCCPA 2444. The expansion area is shaded in red, and this is in the Y Mamma area. This area shows the expansion area associated with HCCPA 2446 in the Baum River View area. So moving on to the companion map amendments, HCCPA 2445 and 47. Again, these are publicly initiated map amendments that are accompanying the text amendments to expand the urban service area boundary. These amendments consist of approximately 15,812 total acres with over 5,000 acres part of CPA 2445 and a little over 10,000 acres as part of CPA 2447. The entire area will be going from Y Mamma Village Residential 2, WVR 2, Residential Plant 2, RP 2, and Agricultural Rural 1 to 5 to various future land uses, including Residential 4, Res 4, Residential 2, Res 2, Residential 1, Res 1, and AR 1 to 5, also public quasi-public and natural preservation. So again, these amendments are generally located in southeast Hillsboro County, south of Lithia Pinecrest, west of County Road 39, and east of US Highway 301. They are in the rural area and lie within the Y Mamma, Baum, and River View community plans, as well as the South Shore Area Wide Systems Plan. So this aerial here shows the general area. Again, you could see the proposed expansion outlined in the red dash line. The lands part of HCCPA 2445 are generally shown in the blue shading and have the WVR 2 future land use. The lands part of 2447 are shown in yellow, the yellow shading, and I have a mostly RP 2 future land use with a small portion being AR 1 to 5. About 100 acres of AR 1 to 5 is included in this request as this acreage accounts for parcels that have a split land use. So this following map shows the adopted future land use in the area. Again, the majority of the lands to the west are residential categories of varying suburban densities. A majority of the lands to the east are agricultural, rural, residential, and natural preservation categories. All right, skip the head there. This map shows the future land uses of Res 4, Res 2, Res 1, and AR 1 to 5, the proposed, as well as the public quasi-public and natural preservation. May be important to note that about 75% of the total area associated with these map amendments is proposed to be Res 4, 20% is proposed to be natural preservation, while the remaining 5% are proposed as one of the other categories listed. Also on this map, it shows some black hatching. These are the privately initiated amendments to expand the USA. These lands again are not associated with these applications, and all the acreages as part of these applications reflect that. So if approved, the proposed amendments would increase residential density potential. The proposed amendments will also reduce the overall non-residential development potential, including removing RP 2 community commercial uses, as well as removing the WVR 2 commercial limitations. It will also support environmental conservation efforts specifically for county-owned properties in the ELAP program. And a more detailed impact breakdown for each amendment is available in the briefing packets. Staff has also held some public engagement meetings. Two in-person meetings were held in November at Sumner High School, which residents were informed of via mail notice, sign postings, local news outlets, and social media. There's an ongoing online survey, and an additional in-person meeting will be occurring next week on January 30th, where we are having county staff attending it there as well. And we will be back March 13th for the public hearing and transmittal for these two amendments. This and more information is available on the project website. So this concludes my presentation, and staff is available for any questions.
Do we have any questions or comments from board members?
I do, Chair.
Mr. Wostel?
I just wanted to know, does staff educate the public? Since we consistently seem to get the same questions that we have done revenue studies. The board has raised those mobility slash impact fees to 100% of the rate studies. That we have school concurrency. And possibly even that, you know, we, we can't, we can't force the school board to build the schools, but you know, the state is now really pushing things like school choice. So at some point, since we're the, we're the information arm during these expansions of planning and development, it feels like we should be extending that critical information. I understand that we're, we're not the state, but the state has really pushed school choice, and it's a reality that exists. So there is a reality that it might not be a public school, but it might be some type of co-op school or whatever might exist in that area. Do we do any type of education saying that we've increased those impact fees? That we have ongoing rate studies every two to three years? That we, that we are planning for storm water management? Maybe that's a Melissa Leinhardt question?
I could answer that. When we do go out into the community, we do educate the residents on where they can find that information. Of course, the planning commission staff itself is not an expert in all the subjects, so we do try to direct them where those questions could be answered.
Okay, and we have some, some really simple, easy to access, maybe one-page website? Or we trying to send them 50 different places?
We have one website for the urban service area expansion project, and all of the information can be found there, including information on upcoming public hearings, community meetings, and anything that we've shared at those community meetings beforehand is all available there.
But what about all my questions about the impact fees, mobility fees, school fees? Is that all on the website?
That is not on the website. We do get agency comments as part of this process, and Melissa Leinhardt could probably speak a little bit more detail about it. And through that process, we do get comments on the impacts of plan amendments, and those are available to the public as they are received.
Well, I'll wait and see what my colleagues have to say, but it just, it just feels like Chair and everyone else that this is the planning commission, and we should be, the planning commission should be communicating to the public the plan, which would include the very critical funding sources that everyone seems to not understand is being fully captured in our new rate studies that we have out there. It seems like that critical information should be shared in that early planning stage so that everyone's not panicked that they're going to be subsidizing the new development. So I'll yield. Thank you.
I thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments from board members?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I would actually like to support that request of helping with the information because I know I was out with some citizens yesterday talking on this, and it is like an education. If I had an actual sort of approved document that would help with those talking points, but I feel like that's what I'm doing is educating them, and I'm happy to do it. But if there were a better way, a more broad way to explain to them, because it's the same questions. Perhaps Commissioner Wostel's been down in South County talking to the same people, but they're, you know, they want to know, well, why can't we do the roads first? And how is this being paid for? And why didn't we do the study? And I would even add sort of like a Q and A, like the number one question I think I get asked is like, let's have a moratorium. Well, what are all the reasons we wouldn't do that? So I don't know. Those are just my thoughts. Anything that could help us, help, this actually helps, you know, you all, right? Like it helps us get the necessary development that we do need to accommodate the growth, not just in Hillsboro County, but in the state, but you know, help us get through this because we're the ones on the front line answering all of their questions. And a one-page or a one source, it's not me. Like in other words, or something that would support me sharing that information with my constituents would be very helpful.
Commissioner Cohen?
I agree wholeheartedly, and I would, I would just add that, I mean, there's so much information that the public, I think, would, would really be, would be somewhat comforted to see because it would, it would underscore the fact that we are making these investments. And what I keep coming back to is this enormous pipeline that we're investing in at Tampa Bay Water to make sure that the water pressure problems in the past and the availability of fresh water problems in the past don't plague the area in the future. That's going to come online in 2028. We have the county building a new wastewater treatment plant down there. We have our CIT that just passed its program, nine new fire stations, and I believe seven of them are in the South County area. So there's, there's a lot of investment that is being made. And in terms of the moratorium, you know, when Commissioner Myers and I started, we were in the midst of a moratorium, and we had to extend it two more times. And we finally were told by the county attorney that we couldn't extend it anymore. We, we had to start making some decisions about what to do. So we've had a moratorium. We've been down that road before. And, you know, part of the reason that it was done was exactly so that all these things could be put into place. So I'm all for giving as much information as possible to people to allay some of these concerns.
Well, one thing that I would say that frustrated me for a very long time is that, and this goes beyond just the planning commission here, since Commissioner Cohen brought up a lot of, a lot of projects, I think, beyond the planning commission scope. But I've always felt that our communications department has done a very poor job of educating the public and getting our message out there as far as all of the good things and infrastructure improvements that we've funded and made. So I, again, not speaking directly to the planning commission, I'll ask Ms. Leinhardt to speak after Commissioner Bowles, but I think that the county in general can do a much better job of getting, getting that message out. And that's something that I think that we should collectively work on and share that, that concern. Commissioner Bowles?
Excuse me. Yes. Just to kind of coat tail on the, the other commissioners here. Yeah, I think that we've all received a number of inquiries through the web mail, and I think that we need to, and I'm not sure outside of our offices, who else is able to see that. But if somebody is kind of, you know, kind of taking that information and, you know, putting it into, I don't want to say like a spreadsheet or source, but there is a consistent theme amongst that. And I think what Christian Wostel is alluding to is that a lot of the questions that we're getting are actually, could be answered through some of our communications. And if we could do maybe a little better job of getting that information out there through a website, you know, we don't have to print up a bunch of three-fold flyers to send out. Let's just get it on the website. We can say, listen, go to hcfl.gov, District 4, I don't know, whatever, whatever we call it, River View or the WVR 2, that, that we can have that information shared with everybody so that we're not kind of shooting from the hip with what we believe to be the correct answer, or that my answer may differ than Fisher Wostel's or Commissioner Miller's or Commissioner Cohen's. We're all kind of rowing the boat in the same direction. However, we need to be having a consistent and, you know, answer to the citizen center so that they're feeling comfortable as possible with the decisions that we're making. So if we can, you know, somehow figure out, I don't know how we've got, it's got to be close to several hundred. But when you start sifting through all of it, they're all saying more or less the same thing, worry about flooding, which I don't know if that's going to be an issue that I think we've alluded to, that that could be the task force going to figure out that it could just be mother nature. But the roads, the schools, security, those kind of things, public safety, those type of issues that keep recurring, keep reoccurring in these emails that are coming up that perhaps that we can, at the very least, put some of those people's questions and fears and allay them, and that we can address them appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Leinhardt, would you like to comment or any suggestions you have?
Before she does, can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Oh, yeah, I can see. Yeah, I can see your, your hand. I saw it was up, and then it was down. And, but yeah, please go ahead.
Yeah, I do agree with what Commissioner Bowles has said. If we can take that same information and hope for the communication, we'll put it up. I do agree with what you said. Chair Hagan, when it comes to communication with the public, it's just few in between, very little that should be shared. But from this workshop, if the planning commission could come up with a one or two pager of information to be shared, and then take that same information and put on each one of our website as well. Just ask them to send it over to each one of the commissioners' websites, same information. So if they have questions, that same information is also on our website as well and on yours' website as well. It'd be very helpful that we just get all at one time sharing the same information. So if we say, go to Commissioner Myers' website, it's there instead of just referring to the, the planning commission. And I think that would be very helpful. And also another piece would be an educational component. Just like you all meet with us, have one meeting that you can meet with our residents on the same issues and try to address as many of their concerns so they have a better understanding what we're talking about when these items come before us, and they have to come before us as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Leinhardt?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Great comments, Commissioners. I know Jay Collins wants to say something in just a second. He's also working on this study. But I just wanted to add that I think something like a frequently asked questions portion of the project page would be very helpful. We had something very similar that we, that we did for the future land use element update last year. So we can work on that on our end. And as Ms. Garantiva mentioned, you know, we do work with the agencies during the agency review process. We do have conversations with a plethora of county departments and staff, so we can coordinate with them on those answers. So we have the most up-to-date and technical information from our experts, and we can get something up. And then hopefully, we'd be able to link it back to you all somehow. I'm not a technical expert myself on technology, so we can work with county staff on how to best do that. But I think on our end, having that information at the ready is a great idea. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Mr. Collins to see if he has anything he'd like to add.
Yeah, thank you, Melissa. This is a good conversation that the board is having. It's also a conversation that staff has at public meetings each and every time that we are in South County on this project. So the frequently asked questions comment, that is something that you will find on the website. The website can be expanded to have one specifically towards infrastructure. I would also like to mention that on January 30th, we've invited a variety of different county departments to that meeting that we have at Sumner High School there in the evening to have this very conversation with members of the public who may attend that meeting. We also, at each of these meetings in the public, bring out a map in the QR of the capital improvements program, that five-year program, so that we can not only show folks what is occurring in South County for infrastructure investment, but we can teach folks how that five-year program actually comes into existence. Because obviously, the programming and the planning that we have in what is today the rural area and what you have, say, on US 41 or US 301, it's two certainly different sides of the equation. and what you have, say, on US 41 or US 301, it's two certainly different sides of the equation. And it does, as a lot of you have already mentioned, take a little bit of time to actually educate people on the process. So it's a good conversation you're having, and it's also one that we're having with the public. And we'll take these things back and we'll go ahead and work on that FAQ, get that back to you guys. And also hopefully you will hear from some of your constituents that the meeting on January 30, they really appreciated what we did at that meeting. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mr. Collins and Ms. Leinhart. Any, any improvements or any additional information that you can provide or any additional methods to disseminate the information, I know will be very much appreciated, not only by the board but by the public. And then I think from the county side of things, I think that we should work with communications to improve their message delivery and things that have been going on in Hillsborough County, I think would be as much needed and would be very much appreciated. Any other board member comments? Does staff have any additional information, anything else to add?
Not this time, sir, but we appreciate these comments, and we will work on our end to address the concerns today.
Okay, well, excellent discussion. And with that, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.